Larry, you want to hit the door there?
Back to John.
Good job.
Do you hear anything?
Thank you, Nathan.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the order this meeting of the Nashua City Planning Board for the ninth of March 2023. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Donchus, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper here, Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And Derek Tebow.
Okay, so we have our quorum. We're going to move forward with the agenda here. In your packet for the board, there's minutes from the February 2nd, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need any amendments? Alderman Cleve?
I'll make that motion to accept the minutes as written.
All right, so that motion to accept as written. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? So two abstentions. That motion passes. Okay. All right, communications?
There are no communications since you've had your time.
Okay, thank you. Any reports of committees or liaisons?
None at this time.
Okay. The only thing I have is just at the CIC met on Monday, and we had the rest of the presentations from Economic Development, IT, and Admin, I think, and we're still in the process of doing the ratings. Those will, I think, be around the 27th or something. They will be meeting to finish that rating and put that that plan together, and then it'll come here afterwards. Okay, so moving forward, I'm going to step right into reading down through the agenda here. A little bit different for those listening, and they're a little bit different meeting here. The only thing on the agenda are going to be sort of other business tonight, so I'll just read through the things that are definitely not happening. So old business, conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, that case number 821-0299 has been tabled until March 23rd. Old business site plans, case numbers 821-0300, -0301, and -0302, all have been tabled previously and won't be heard until March 23rd. There are no new business conditional special use permits, no new subdivision plans, no new site plans. So we're moving directly into other business here. So first up on the other business is the tentative agenda. So for the board, at the end of your packet, there was a tentative agenda. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at that and make a want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion that having reviewed the tentative agenda, there are no proposals of regional impact.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley. There are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. That motion passes unanimously. All right, next up, other business. It's a referral. This is a referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed O-23-043. This is amending the zoning map by rezoning portions of Veterans Memorial Parkway into Vale Street and Huey Street and land situated west of Veterans Memorial Parkway to see urban residents, R-C District. And just for staff, should I hear all these, just call out all these three and hear them together?
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend taking a collect.
Yep, okay, so then so I'm going to hear that collectively with the referral from the Board of Alderman on O-23-044 and O-23-045. Is the last one part of it, too?
O-2347 is not part of it.
Okay, so we'll wait on that one. Okay. So those are the three items that we'll hear together, and someone want to explain more what we're hearing and who's talking?
Good evening, everyone. That's all from Community Development. It's good to see you all. It's been a moment since I've been back at this board. It's good to see everyone. I'm happy to have a lighter agenda this evening to give adequate time consideration to these referrals before you this evening. I think based on your upcoming agendas, it's in some ways a calm before the storm, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to address these proposals in great detail. I did just quickly want to start by introducing not only the city staff that are vividly involved, but also the development team. One of the things we'll hear as a common core during the presentation this evening is that this is very much a collective and collaborative effort between the city and the folks both with Thorndike Development, but also with the L.A. Building and the Dorian Plan, who did not be here this evening. So just quickly, if I could acknowledge everyone that's in the crowd, we have Brad Westgate, who you're all familiar with, the project attorney, Lloyd Geisinger, principal of Thorndike Development, Michael Devon with Thorndike Development, Tom Zajac with Hainer Swanson, and David Eastridge, also with Thorndike Development. This is the project team, as it were, that we've been working with. Director Cummings may stop in this evening as well, who's been a critical part of the project, but I just wanted to introduce those folks who'll be speaking in just a few minutes. I did want to provide just some broad introductory remarks, and I'll be brief here as I've committed to staff and the project team, but I want to really be clear that this is really the first forum to hear what will often be described as very complex and multifaceted project. However, what I hope the board will gather this evening as part of this conversation is, yes, the project is complex based on the site conditions that exist, but this is again a very unique and collaborative public-private partnership that would only be possible through some of the legislative changes that you're going to consider this evening, and both staff and the project team will be fully prepared to address questions that you might have as a result of that. As I mentioned, the city team, including Engineer Hudson, the Division of Public Works as well, have been working very closely with this development team over the past year, perhaps a bit more, to actually draft and craft the development or redevelopment proposal that you'll see before you this evening, and have arrived at the need for these pieces of legislation to actually support this redevelopment of the Mohawk Tannery property adjacent to Broad Street and, of course, the neighborhood known as Little Florida. Once, the city really has three broad objectives, I would say, in considering and bringing forward this development proposal, the first of which is really quite simple, and that is the remediation of the Mohawk Tannery property and the associated waste that exists because of the former use of that property. So remediation is very much priority number one and certainly public benefit number one. Number two is obviously the creation of a redevelopment plan, a reuse of the property that is not only reflective of larger city strategic priorities and objectives, but is also in alignment with the master plan that this Planning Board endorsed and helped prepare as part of Imagine Nashua back in 2021 and, of course, 2020. So we believe this project reflects the objectives of that plan. And third, and you'll hear more about this really as part of future consideration of actually the site plan, the creation of some public amenities and benefit that this project will bring forward as part of the redevelopment plan that is intended not only to benefit the residents or potential residents of this development, but also residents of Nashua at large, the public, and visitors to the community as well. So really, a public benefit is a huge piece of this project, and we'll talk about that in more detail. To accomplish all of this, though, as I've said, there are several legislative actions that need to be considered, and really, this is the first step in that process. In fact, you were the first body to hear a formal presentation on specific legislation needed to accomplish or move forward this project. I do want to point out, though, and be very clear that although you're the first, you are perhaps the board that will have the most involvement with crafting this redevelopment proposal, as it were, and the final product that will hopefully be approved as part of this process. And so while your referral jurisdiction is limited tonight to the three pieces of legislation in front of you, you're going to have many more opportunities to look at the plans, the zoning, and the project before you, and I just want to reiterate that, that this is the first of many steps over what will likely be a 10-year process to actually full up, fully build out the site, assuming that all goes well, quite frankly. Staff are, of course, available to answer any questions about the three pieces of legislation that you'll see this evening, but we thought it best to pass it off to the development team, both to talk quickly about what those pieces of legislation are and then to provide a larger overview of the site so that the Planning Board has full context when considering those pieces of legislation. So to that end, I'm going to pass it off to Brad Westgate to offer some brief comments about the legislature before you this evening.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. My name's Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer, weiner and Bennett, 402 Amherst Street in Nashua and representing Blaylock Holdings LLC, which is the prospective developer of the former Tannery site. Mr. Sullivan indicated who is here present with me. Bernie Plant and Lloyd Geisinger are the two principals of Blaylock, and Mr. Geisinger is also president of Thorndike Development Corp., which is a Massachusetts-based, longstanding residential multifamily developer. Mr. Eastridge and Mr. Devon are also with Thorndike. Tom Zajac, you know, of course, from Hainer Swanson. Mr. Sullivan noted, we're here tonight to talk about the referral of three items of legislation from the Board of Alderman. I also wanted to thank both Mr. Sullivan, Tim Cummings, Celia Leonard in the Corporation Council's office, and Mr. Hudson for all the time and effort they've spent with us trying to pull together not just these draft items of legislation, but really construct the concept for the projects as well, get some sense and feedback on the development ideas and scope. It's been a pretty concerted effort, and I think a good one. Just a little bit of background and then tell you how we'd like to proceed. I'm going to just briefly describe again the points of legislation that have been referred to you, small amount of information regarding the project. I'm going to then hand it off to Lloyd Geisinger. He's going to walk you through in relatively summary form the PowerPoint presentation that he and his team put together, and then I'll get back up and just talk in a little more detail, focusing on the proposed ordinance, the so-called overlay district ordinance, the text itself, as opposed to the two rezoning maps and overlay district maps that you'll see. You all received, I think by email yesterday, and then the same packages in front of you tonight, the PowerPoint presentation in the binders and the sort of presentation summary that I prepared, that's the handout loose outside of the binders, and that's what I'm going to summarize a little bit of. So there's just under 41 acres of land that's involved in this project. It consists of the former Mohawk Tannery site, adjacent Fimbal land, some small parcels near Fairmont Street, end of that, a little piece of property owned by the Tamposys, and then about 4.42 acres of the Parkway right-of-way, and that's a component of what will be the project development. The Parkway right-of-way piece is necessary because that's where access to the project will be. The beauty of the project is that the access comes off the Parkway and doesn't have to have core access from the Fairmont Street neighborhood. Mr. Sullivan indicated it's really two-part idea, remediation, and then redevelopment, private part, private, public partnership on the remediation side. It's really full private money on the redevelopment side. There's other pieces of legislation that go before the Board of Alderman, including a master concept plan and master development agreement. They sort of set the tone for the project. Those aren't before you tonight, but they do require Board of Alderman approval. Without them, none of the project concepts can be developed. But also, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, the legislation tonight plus some subsequent legislation is critical to lay the foundation for this project to have legs, if you will. So the three items of legislation you've noted, one, rezones some land to put it into the RC District. That's really the Fimbal piece, and this 4.2 acres of the Parkway piece, those are the core items that need RC District rezoning to be consider, to be consistent with the existing RC zoning on the Mohawk Tannery site. That, believe it or not, that was rezoned RC in 1984 in the anticipation of residential development. The Article 2344 is the zoning ordinance. Overlay District changed the text. I'll talk about in a little bit. And 45 is merely the reason, the creation of the overlay district to complement the text of the overlay ordinance. So we rezone land to get all of it in RC. RC is the fundamental district that governs zoning, and then the overlay district puts on the necessary cap, if you will, to allow this development to proceed procedurally. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Geisinger. He'll give some context to all this, I think, by way of the PowerPoint presentation.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Hopefully, the technology will not fail us. Can you go to the full screen on that, Sam?
Yep.
There we go. Excellent. All right, so this isn't working.
Lloyd, we can toggle for you. It's fine.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, again, my name is Lloyd Geisinger, President of Thorndike Development. Bernie Plant is in Aruba, so we can all wish him well. In fairness to him, this was his third time trying to go to Aruba. The first time he arrived, he was there for a day, and COVID had just shut everything down, and Jeff Lou said everyone had 24 hours to get off the island or they were going to be trapped. He decided to come back. I'm really not quite sure why, but nonetheless, I joke, but Bernie is the driving force that made all this happen. As all of you know, he's worked tirelessly for years. It's a remarkable effort. We have been working with Bernie on a, another environmentally challenged piece of property down in Canton, Massachusetts, the old Paul Revere site, where the Paul Revere actually had his forge and and made all of the copper for the State House and whatnot, and and that's been redeveloped. If any of you are driving through Canton at any time, I truly encourage you to stop in and see it. The transformation is amazing. We came onboard there and built out the residential piece of it, which is 250 condominiums essentially, and that's how Bernie and I met, and he asked us to get involved here, and it's been just a great partnership. I have to really thank Matt and Dan and Tim and Celia. I know it's been said already, but we've been meeting every two weeks for a year, and many of them in person, some Zoom, multiple conversations offline beyond those meetings. We wouldn't be standing here before you if it weren't for everyone's efforts. So I get to have the fun part of this presentation. I'm going to run you through an abbreviated version of the PowerPoint that we showed to the Board of Alderman a few weeks back. I suspect some of you have, might have seen this already. The booklet that you have in front of you is exactly what I'm going to be showing you, so if it's easier, you can certainly flip through. And Sam, we're going to move through these fairly quickly. So first, just to orient, I think everyone knows where the site is, but obviously access off the Veterans Parkway and nestled along the Nashua River and across from Mine Falls Park. Next slide, please. For me, this is one of the most extraordinary slides, and it was taken back in the 70s. It is when the tannery was in full gear, and the two massive areas adjacent to the Nashua River are the primary lagoons where the tannery pumped its sludge after operating its process. Those lagoons are still there. They are within the 100-year flood event elevation, so if there was a 100-year event, it's a very dangerous situation. And in a nutshell, the whole idea and efforts behind the EPA and the Superfund site is to get those to a point that they will not pose a threat. Next slide, please. And as has been already described, the EPA has has signed a settlement agreement with Blaylock, Bernie's efforts before we got involved. A very landmark case from the EPA's point of view, one of the very first projects in which they agreed to make a contribution, a $6 million grant to the project. And so that $6 million grant is a critical part of the financing for the project. In addition to that, the New Hampshire Business Finance Authority has also agreed to make a $3 million loan. The city is making a $2 million loan, and Thorndike Blaylock is putting in just under $4 million of private equity as well. This is all for the cleanup piece, and that does, that's separate from the development afterwards. Did I give you enough time, Sam, or?
Appreciate it. Thank you for the help, please. We'll be back on in a minute.
I just got to tell you, Sam, we're not going to take you to our next presentation.
Don't bring that computer.
Yeah. Well, maybe when you reboot, this thing will work.
Great. Is that on, that clicker?
Oh, I didn't have it on. Son of a God.
We're not bringing you to that presentation either, Lloyd.
That's what I get for not putting my glasses on. While while Sam is booting up, the, many of the images that you see in the booklet that we sent you are are based on a, well, all of the images are based on a three-dimensional model that we built of the site. These are accurate to 1/16 of an inch. I mean, this is the real deal. This is the actual architecture we plan on on using, and one of the underpinnings of the plan that is there is that we're trying very hard to create a streetscape that is pedestrian-friendly. So the fundamental architecture has a series of direct-entry flats at the front of the buildings, which should enliven the entire streetscape. Behind those six direct-entry flats is a parking garage, which you cannot see, but also reduces the amount of impervious cover. Ah, we're back. Okay. See if this works now. Look at that.
There you go.
Amazing. They don't really let me do this stuff usually. So just getting back to the flow of the presentation, the, this slide shows you the, once the property is cleaned up, the green area adjacent to the lagoon is the containment area where the various environmentally challenged soils around the site will be consolidated behind a a Secant wall, which is a very high-tech concrete wall that will be designed and engineered to withstand a 500-year event. And so when all this is done, it gets capped, and and then, as you'll see in a few slides, it's it's suitable for a landscape purpose. I'm switching now to the specific items before you. This slide shows you the current zoning. The Mohawk parcel is zoned RC, but the Fimbal door and the right-of-way are still in a industrial zone, which will be rezoned if the Board of Alderman chooses to vote in favor of this. And this just shows, and excuse the change in orientation, in this slide, the Parkway is at the top of the slide, shows is the actual exhibit that's attached to the the overlay zoning. The orange is the industrial zone. There are a couple of little, I'll call them pink, which are, which are streets that are, paper streets that would be rezoned to the same same zoning. And that then will allow us to create this contiguous and continuously zoned parcel, which will form the foundation for the development and be the limits of the overlay district. So I'd like to take, just very quickly, run through some slides that will give you a better sense of where we go from here, what this project, the vision for the property once the remediation is completed. And the, just starting, this then shows the the development once it's it's done, a series of buildings. The front buildings are apartment buildings. The rear buildings are intended to be condominium buildings, and the containment area that you saw earlier gets redesigned and revisioned as a major recreation space. The property to the far south, which is about 13 acres, remains as open space and will be deeded to the town. So talking about some of the amenities that are planned, you start to see how this thing will unfold. There's a river walk. There is as well a playground. There's a dog park and a couple more shots of the dog park, a river walk, which will be open to the general public, a kayak launch, which will also be open to the general public, and a very exciting, a pedestrian bridge, which has been part of the recreation plan since the 1970s, which will not only connect this property, but this whole area of Nashua, including the Little Florida area, over to the Mine Falls Park. So this is just a view looking back at the development from Mine Falls Park, and and part of the the plan here is to make pedestrian connections from the adjacent neighborhoods down through the property, connecting to that pedestrian bridge, as well as from across Veterans Parkway, where there will now be a stoplight as part of of the development, giving access to the general public. You can also see in this slide, and I know the pointer doesn't work with TV screens, but in the center of the slide, at the bottom, is the location of the boat launch. There we go. Thank you, Sam. I had mentioned earlier that the notion behind the architecture is really intended to build a streetscape that is pedestrian-friendly. So here you see how these buildings are designed with the direct-entry flats that will help to enliven the development at at the ground level. Stepped back, there are terraces, and then the homes themselves on the, oh, there we go, we lost it again. Well, I I think, I think I'll stop because you have the PowerPoint and all the images, so you can flip through them, and I think they're they're self-explanatory. They give you hopefully a good sense of of what the vision in, as Matt mentioned, we're going to be back before you many times, getting into the plan itself in detail, which is not the principal agenda item tonight. And if we do get the technology back, I can certainly answer any questions a little bit later. So I'll turn it back to Brad.
Thank you, Lloyd. So I'll just briefly bring us back to the core items, the three referrals from the Board of Alderman for the three items of legislation. Just remind you what they are, and they're all, I'm sure, in your heads already. The first one is the rezoning of the Fimbal piece, part of the Parkway, that 4.42 acres and those small pieces off Intervale and Fairmont, to get everything into the RC District. That rezoning map, I think, is page seven of the handouts. Pretty easy to see. The one thing about looking at these plans is we think of the Nashua River as running east-west, at least I do, but in this small part, it's running north-south. So every time, when you saw the PowerPoints that Lloyd indicated, you were mostly seeing the orientation of the property 90 degrees to the left. So it, when you drive onto the Parkway, just to give you a sense, if you enter the Parkway from Broad Street, you're not going too far down as you head downtown. And on the right, remember, there's a, you've noticed a small sculpture, I think, that's about roughly speaking where the entrance road would go into this project. On the right, heading into town off Broad Street, and we're between the Parkway and the river. That's why the north-south makes it come together, I think. So that's all that Ordinance 2343 does, is it rezones those parcels to get everything consistent into RC. Ordinance 2345 takes the project site, all the land is not quite 41 acres, and imposes on it the overlay district, or the redevelopment district, we call it, so that that piece of land can benefit and be governed by the overlay district ordinance. 2344 is the proposed ordinance, excuse me, overlay district ordinance itself, the text of an ordinance, which will become part of the land use code, and this is what we spent a significant amount of time on between the development team and ourselves to get the text of this down. So I'll just take a few minutes to highlight- So, I'll just take a few minutes to highlight some of the core pieces of the text of the overlay district ordinance. In the presentation, the handout that you have, the ordinance itself is stapled to the four or five sheets of my summary, and the PowerPoints in the ordinance are highlighted in yellow, if you have that interest. So, I try to correlate these comments a little bit to those core points that are highlighted in yellow on the ordinance itself. First is the purpose, and the ordinance, proposed ordinance notes that the purpose of the ordinance is twofold, really, to facilitate remediation of the environmentally challenged property adjacent to the river and allow development of one of the largest unremaining development, remaining, undeveloped parcels in the city for an array of housing opportunities. Another core item in the ordinance is permitted uses. Permitted uses are those allowed in the RC district, plus some service businesses and professions, active and passive recreation, accessory uses. The idea of the service businesses is to have a cap of about 20,000 square feet maximum of the non-residential-type uses and to be of a flavor that is typical for this sort of development. And I mentioned, there's a master concept plan and a master development agreement. These are both Board of Aldermen-level concepts. So, the master concept plan is to lay out, roughly speaking, what the project is to be, to have core items understood, have the Board of Aldermen approve that master concept plan, enter into a master development agreement with the developing, the developer Blaylock, and then come to the planning board to deal with subdivision, site plan applications and approvals. So, neither of those replace the typical planning board process, but they set an umbrella over that process, which we have to live with. The dimensional requirements in the overlay district would be the same as in the RC district, but with some flexibility given to the planning board to deal with dimensional requirements, other than density. Density is not changeable, if you will, by the planning board. It's governed by the RC district density. But there's some play to be given to the planning board to deal with dimensional requirements so that the master concept plan and the project layout can fit within what the design the planning board sees appropriate. There's a couple of specific legislative pieces. One is a green space requirement of 50% of the full project site be green space. That does include the 13 or so acres of the parkland that would be deeded to the city once we sort of hit a threshold of development. And there are some special conditions that are also noted in the tail end of this proposed ordinance. One of them is getting rid of some archaic conditions that were imposed in 1984 when the tannery site and the Tamposy piece were zoned to RC. There were a number of conditions that were detailed at the, at that point that dealt with the nature of the tannery. They've all be, they've all become, again, sort of overwhelmed by time. So, the special conditions in this proposal eliminate all of those, but two that are, sort of the only relevant go-forward items. So, our thought is that the concept that we've developed for the project fits nicely within the idea of these three pieces of legislation and that the pieces of legislation work well with this concept. But, the concept doesn't work without the three pieces of legislation being passed. The rezoning's critical. The creation of the overlay district is critical for the need to allow planning board flexibility in the ultimate approval, we would hope, of the concept. We also think that, as Mr. Sullivan indicated at the beginning, that this package of zoning changes fit nicely within the master plan, the Imagine Nashua, the plan that was adopted in 2001. Some of the elements of that plan included remediation of environmentally-challenged pieces, ma, ma, excuse me, meeting housing needs, even in certain cases of higher density that the city requires, enhancing river access, enhancing recreational access as well. All of those concepts are elements of this proposed project. All of us are happy to answer questions, Mr. Chairman. Happy to give any thoughts, feedback that you like. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thanks. So, I got a couple of questions, just real quick. So, on the permitted uses part, in that section C2, it talks about service businesses and professions. And, you know, it has that 20,000-square-foot cumulative sort of cap on it, right? Where'd that number come from and, and if that number wants to change, who gets to change it? Only reason I'm saying this is because, you know, we've just dealt with some special overlay districts in the past here and the modifications to the quantity of the uses that are other than the original, they, that can be problematic down the road, is probably a good word for it.
The, I'll let Mr. Geisler comment if, if he wants to add to it relative to where the number came from. But it was frankly a discussion concept between the development team and city staff. The idea was not to overwhelm the project with non-residential uses. To change it, because it would be part of the zoning, effectively a zoning ordinance provision, it would require a variance to be changed if we wanted to up beyond 20,000 square feet, for example.
And what's the process for that variance? Is that, is that an Aldermanic variance? Is that a planning board? Is that?
ZBA.
So, it's ZBA?
There, there are, I understand the sensitivity based on recent projects, first of all.
Yeah.
So, there are two options for any exceeding of the, the square footage allowance that's currently proposed. One would be a variance through the zoning board of adjustment, a traditional variance process, if you will.
So, that's a traditional process.
The other would be a modification to the code by the Board of Aldermen.
Okay.
That would also be an option, albeit perhaps a higher bar to clear. But I'm sure if there were a reasonable justification for it, it could be something that could be approved. But that would be absolutely appropriate feedback if this board thinks that perhaps an alternative process that's more flexible would be more appropriate. You know, that's, that's absolutely acceptable. But we don't think it's as onerous as some other zoning language that we have in place.
Yeah.
That has some alternative procedures associated with it.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking like, I'm gonna call it the normal process of, of going to zoning, you know, getting the change, then obviously whatever. Let's say someone wanted to do a 30,000-square-foot restaurant or something, that'd be a massive restaurant, I guess. But, so that process would be like, go to zoning, get a variance. If it goes through the variance, then it would still come to the planning board afterwards. But, in that mechanism, how does the, how does the Aldermanic board get involved? Are they not even involved in that scenario?
Well, it's a, it's a great question and the numbers do matter. Part of that is that one of the very deliberate pieces of this proposed zoning is that because this project is being held to a master concept plan, there are specific thresholds, both administrative and other, within the proposed ordinance that define if the concept plan is changing or if the plan is changing, whether or not it can be an administrative amendment, whether it can be a planning board amendment, or it's required to be an Aldermanic amendment. And so, when I say that numbers matter, if we're increasing from 20,000 to 30,000 square feet in size, I can't answer right this second what process that would follow, but it would be likely a planning board process, with the exception of the variance that would be needed to go beyond the 20,000. But it would then be a planning board process to actually approve the site plan that would show that.
Sure.
And just, given that the, the underlying district would be residential, I'm assuming this permitted use, this contemplated by the overlay wouldn't be ordinarily permitted within the underlying district, right?
That's actually a very interesting question, and I think either Attorney Westky or I can speak to this. There are some non-residential uses contemplated, contemplated by the underlying zoning. One of the challenges that should be made clear here is that the board is about to embark on a land use code amendment process, and we wanted this overlay zone to sort of resist, or not resist, but live beyond a land use code update. And so, although the current zoning allows for some non-residential uses in the, in the RC zone, we wanted to make sure that non-residential uses were protected into the future beyond the existing land use code, if that makes sense. And that's why it was specifically codified here, really in an additive way to what the current zoning does.
Okay. So, the other question I had is, that number four in that list just says accessory uses. It seems a little vague. I don't, is that, is that clear enough? Is that gonna create questions?
It's, it's both unclear, but customary and very common. So, it's, it's a term that's used frequently within our zoning ordinance, and I would argue that it's intentionally vague, quite honestly.
Okay.
But accessory uses, as it's applied here, would be to the permitted uses specifically outlined. For example, if, you know, the playground that's proposed is an accessory use to the residential development that's there, there would have to be a reasonable, or I guess, I guess I would say a nexus between whatever that accessory use is and the permitted uses within the ordinance for it to be an acceptable permitted use.
Okay.
I'm giving you an incredible non-answer to that question, Mr. Chair, but reality is, it's a know-it-when-you-see-it standard, and there would be an, you know, there would be an individual analysis based on the proposed use.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, even though the term is vague, perhaps, it is the exact term, of course, used in the land use code currently, as we all know. And there's a lot of cases, if you will, case law, that has been developed over the years that defines accessory uses. And the point is exactly as Mr. Sullivan noted, it's accessory to the principal use. So, you know, if you had the daycare facility, for example, and then you wanted to have some expanded outside play area, or whatever the case may be, that would be deemed accessory to the core principal use. That's all I had in mind when first drafting this.
Yeah. One more question for me, again, another hypothetical, but wondering how it would take shape is, 10 years down the road, somebody wants to put a different use in there. Like, I guess a restaurant is probably a good, right? That's not listed in here, right? Is it? Like, somebody want, let's just, let's just call it a restaurant, wants to go in there. How does, how does that work?
Well, if the project develops out as contemplated, of course, it's gonna be relatively densely developed. There's no doubt about it. If it's never developed, for whatever reason, then whoever comes to contemplate potential uses of this property is gonna look at this ordinance, and frankly, they're gonna go back to city departments and figure out how do we work through this ordinance or what's necessary to change to get us, to get us there. So, the, the project, as you saw laid out, doesn't set aside a significant amount of land for the non-residential uses. It's a practical matter.
Yeah. I just, I'm just trying to understand change processes because inevitably they come.
That would be a variance request, too, right?
Would that just be a typical zoning?
It could, it could again be one of two things. It could either be through a variance request, or it could potentially be through an amendment to the, the zoning as, as proposed. One of the, the key, or the core concepts that we have to sort of buy into collectively here that differentiates this overlay zone from some other overlays or innovative land use controls that you've seen, is that the intent is to build out this site fully with one property owner, at least one shared developer. That's different from some of the other overlay zones that you've dealt with recently that laid out a long-term, 20-to-30-year build-out and made some very deliberate assumptions about what that build-out would, would look like, but were then, then lost their currency and were very difficult to apply by the planning board decades later. The intent here is that this does get built out. In the event that it doesn't, then certainly an Aldermanic action that would rezone the property, or potentially request for zoning relief would be an appropriate, appropriate way to remedy it. The developer does not lose the ability to request a variance if this overlay is installed. It does not go, have to go strictly back just based on a use variance.
Okay. And is there anything in this, I mean, I haven't read it word-for-word, not everything, but does it make any changes to any parking counts that would normally be in, in our land use codes? Is it contemplating a, a different amount of parking, or?
It does not contemplate a different amount of parking. It does contemplate alternative parking space dimensions and aisle widths.
Okay.
That is something that the development team was very deliberate about requesting, and that is included in the overlay.
Exactly.
Sorry, I've been hogging. Anybody else? Alderman click?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, my questions kind of go down the same line that yours did, and it's difficult sometimes for me to not leave my Aldermanic hat on. So, going back to C2, and this is probably to Director Sullivan, when we talk here about that, it says in the ordinance itself, no more than 20,000 square feet, and you said that they could go and request a variance and so on. But we have an ordinance, an actual ordinance that says no more than 20,000. How does that apply? Do we need to amend the ordinance to allow that, or?
So, Chair, this ordinance is no different than the current ordinances that govern land use across the city. And, and so, as a result, an applicant, an owner, a developer, has the ability, the legal right to request a variance from that ordinance. What is slightly unique here, though, that I want to point out, is while they have that legal right, there are other controlling provisions of the master concept plan and these other pieces of legislation that may mean that not only is a variance needed, but actually an amendment to the master concept plan or the master development agreement may also be needed through the Board of Aldermen. And so, it is a bit different, I guess I should make that very clear, that it won't be as simple as a variance. There may be other associated actions needed by the Board of Aldermen, depending upon the variance, I won't use that word, depending upon the level of differentiation from the approved plans.
Just a quick follow-up?
Yep, go ahead.
And, and that kind of adds to the, the next one. When we talked about, and it would probably go for the master development plan, when it was brought up about a restaurant of some sort, you know, that, that frontal property that hides the parking behind that where the residents would be, if that were to be turned into a restaurant, or part of it turned into a restaurant. Again, that, too, would have to come as much to the Board of Aldermen because it changes the master plan. Am I correct on that?
I, I'm hesitant to answer specific questions of that nature because I think we need to know more information before answering that question. But what I can say is that the master concept plan, combined with the master development agreement and the overlay that's in front of you, lay out a very specific set of thresholds that trigger alternative processes. So, in the event that a 30,000-square-foot restaurant is proposed, my belief would be that that is a modification to the master concept plan, and that would require Aldermanic action, simply to get that use approved, and it would also require additional actions by this board as well. But I don't want to be bound to that answer because we are dealing with a hypothetical. But the bottom line is there are alternative thresholds.
And, and trust me, I don't feel that that's necessarily what's gonna be happening, but I just wanted to understand, as, sometimes as things develop, minds change and so on.
Absolutely.
And I trust the plan that's being put forward is what we're gonna see, but I just have to put that through. So, thank you.
Mr. Garley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if, if you could maybe just, at a very high level, sort of connect the provisions of the overlay district to the proposed development. In other words, you know, you had said, obviously, there's these three ordinances that are necessary to, you know, create the conditions for the, you know, successful development here. And I'm just, I just want to have a sort of, like, a very high-level, broad understanding of, you know, what is, what are the sort of aspects of the, the overlay district that would, you know, facilitate the project?
Let me try to give a few. First, relative to the uses. Core uses through the RC district are independent of the overlay district need. But the notion of active and passive recreational uses was to put, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, somewhat in stone, anticipating the change in the land use code fully, to make certain that that was a permitted use in the overlay district, irrespective of what might happen to the RC district uses, for example. We don't, we certainly don't expect the new land use code to change the RC district density or scope of residential uses in it. If it did, we would have a significant concern. Because frankly, if we weren't with a vested subdivision, site plan application, Because frankly, if we weren't with a vested subdivision site plan application, and the code changed, and it said you couldn't have, um, multifamily properties in an RC district, we'd have a big problem. So, anyway, there's some element of that. That's number one. The, the master concept plan, as Matt was describing, it, it, that whole idea doesn't exist without this overlay district, without this ordinance. And the Board of Aldermen, I think, feels, um, more comfortable with the zoning changes, and sort of setting this project in motion, because of the financial pieces of it as well, that lend the Board of Aldermen to want to see a master concept plan in place. No other project that, that comes before you unless another overlay district requires it mandates a master concept plan. So, we're, it's both a, a plus and a minus, if you will. It's a plus in the sense that it creates a, the framework for us to design this project, and get Board of Aldermen acquiescence, an agreement on the changing of the zoning, hopefully leading to the financing pieces as well, on the remediation side. So, it's helpful in that sense. It constrains us, though, in changes, like the ones we were just describing. Because if, for example, a 30,000-square-foot restaurant is deemed, um, a major modification, we'd have to go all the way up to the Board of Aldermen to get that approved, to amend the master concept plan to do so. The, you've all touched on, frankly, the hardest things we had in drafting this document. And you intuitively saw this, I think. Figuring out, how do we govern the master concept plan? Where are big changes, where are little changes, and how do we parcel out who makes judgments on those changes? And we've done that in the section D, excuse me, mostly in section E, on the fifth, fourth or fifth page, and you'll see it. So, the detail of processing changes is another kind of critical piece, I think, both from the Board of Aldermen perspective and the developer perspective. The, um, the other side of it is, the, on the inclusionary zoning side of, of the, the ordinance, there's a, um, there's flexibility given to the payment-in-lieu process, the affordable housing alternative, if you will. That's, um, modified somewhat by way of this ordinance, so that's critical to the project as well. And it's critical, because obviously, there's a remediation side to this. We're not starting with a piece of land that, um, uh, needs nothing done to it but processed through applications. Frankly, if, if it was that kind of piece of land, the whole notion of the overlay district may not be necessary, but it is. So, those are maybe a few examples of how there's an interplay between city needs and developer needs implemented through the overlay district.
So, just a quick follow-up on the, on the, you mentioned the payment-in-lieu, because I saw that, that table at the back of the presentation. So, this overlay would permit payment-in-lieu entirely, rather than actually designating a portion of the units within the inclusionary zoning, is that the idea?
The, well, not exactly. There is a requirement of, of affordable housing percentage on the rental side. The payment-in-lieu, there's no requirement, at least as we're trying to work up the master development agreement, which is really gonna govern it, not so much this. We're trying to work up the master development agreement now, but the basic idea is that the payment-in-lieu piece effectively will apply to the condominium side, as opposed to the rental side. That's the basic idea. But that's, that isn't finalized yet, because all you're seeing here in the ordinance is the ability to enable flexibility in how we implement that. But we have to nail it down by way of the master development agreement itself, which is something we've been drafting back and forth, which we hope to get to the Board of Aldermen for its first submission shortly. And, um, I must, you folks may see that as well. So, we're not, I, I put it this way, we're not really done yet to give you a decent, full answer on that question.
Understood. Thank you.
Does the, um, does either the ordinance or the master development agreement that's being contemplated, specify, is, does any, any of the roadways become city, or are they all private, or?
Yeah, um, the master development agreement is gonna nail that down, and the, the basic idea, and I think we're all on the same page, both development team and the city staff, is that the, the road in, um, if you, I'm not sure what slide to look at at this point.
Yeah, we've got that.
But, but the, the road in from the parkway is gonna be a public road. There's no question about it, because within, the idea is to then create, uh, uh, conforming lots off that public road. Because there's gonna be different lots for the rental side versus the condominium side, for example, and sublots to that. And there's even other lots that deal with the parkway piece, um, excuse me, the park piece, going towards the boat ramp area, that sort of thing. So, anyway, the, so that would be a public road. We're talking through, right now, with city staff, it to be privately maintained, but even though it may be a public road, privately maintained, because effectively, you have the one user. But I understand Board of Public Works, of course, would have to, um, agree to that ultimately. The rest of the road system is contemplated to be private. And really, all that boils down to is the continuation of the spine road to get into the back of the project site, and the road that goes towards the Tamposi piece, map sixty-two lot hundred, one hundred, to give access to that property. The, the 1984 ordinance that rezoned Tamposi and the Tannery site contemplated that the, um, that whenever this was accessed, this property, the Tannery site was ever accessed, it would provide access to the Tamposi piece. So, that idea has carried through to today.
What about, are there any, has there been any thought about, um, if, uh, solar is contemplated on the site, whether it's overhead for parking, or, you know, coverage, or even in the other areas of the undeveloped, or, uh, is that, is that allowable within this development? Is it, does it require a variance again, or something, or?
Oh, let me ask this, answer the second, and then maybe Lloyd will talk briefly about the, whether the idea is feasible or contemplated.
Yeah.
The, here's, my true sense on it would be that if sol, if solar arrays were put on buildings, for example, I don't think they rise to the level of Board of Aldermen needed approval. They may rise to the level of an amended site plan with this board, or they may even be administratively amended. So, I don't see them as, um, uh, serious hard work to let that occur. If solar arrays are put on the ground, um, perhaps a different, perhaps a different issue. Maybe there's a little more of an aesthetic component to that, that might have an impact on the master concept plan. The, the people making those judgments in City Hall would have to decide, what level does that fall into?
Yeah.
Lloyd, has any thought on whether solar would be, even given any ideas to it yet? Yeah, okay.
But generally speaking, building-mounted solar arrays, those would be accessory to the principal use. Uh, if, same would go for car-mounted, or for car parts, or parts. But if ground-mounted, would be a site plan amendment, so that would go before the board.
Okay.
Mr. Wallinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this is, this is more for staff. Has there been, the, the premise behind this is it looks like the, uh, the parkway right-of-way acquisition is not insignificant, and obviously, there's history with New Hampshire DOT and federal funds, and it was formerly a four-lane cross-section, and then a two-lane cross-section. And I think there may have been some discussion at that time about return of funds. I'm trying to understand if there's been any consultation with New Hampshire DOT as to whether or not they would even allow that break, and I assume that's limited access right-of-way. I wonder if you've had those discussions thus far, or if anyone, Mr. Westgate, would care to answer that as well?
Sam would be at a slight, um...
Sure, I'll start. It is my, it's my understanding that access was always contemplated in this location, you know, for development of this sort. So, as far as, as that's concerned, we're okay there, but in terms of return of funds and, and a two-lane versus a four-lane cross-section, I, I don't have an answer for you on that this time.
Okay. I, I guess, as a quick follow-up, has New Hampshire DOT actually been consulted? I'm trying to understand if there's, at least the feasibility has been thrown out there. Whether or not it was planned twenty-plus years ago, or forty-plus years ago, has someone engaged in whether or not there's a feasible element in doing so?
We've had a lot of talk with DOT, both the city has directly, and we have as well directly. And yes, there's a return of funds to the federal government upon the sale. The idea here is that the, there's already been processed, primarily led by Bernie Plan, and with, with the help of the city, a so-called categorical exclusion granted by DOT to effectively say, yes, this land qualifies to be sold, to be come, to come out of the parkway right-of-way, and can be sold off to a private party. We're now in the process of finalizing the appraisal step that's necessary with DOT to enable that to happen, to then go to a purchase and sale agreement with the city that Board of Aldermen has to approve to allow that sale to occur. One of the plans you'll see that will come before you someday will be a subdivision plan to take that four-point, two, four-point-four acres out of the parkway right-of-way and create it as a conveyable parcel. So, our purchase and sale, the city contemplates that as a prerequisite for us to be able to close on that. So, yeah, we've worked pretty extensively already on that, and perhaps Mr. Hudson has more to supplement, because he's had his own direct communications. I don't mean to put him on the spot, obviously.
No, no, that's fine. Um, yeah, we've had those discussions. The, uh, the parcel that's being talked about being transferred, there's asbestos disposal that occurred. It's part of the parkway project there, um, that will be incorporated in the other containment area on the site. There was also some drainage features in the parkway design that will be, um, dealt with, replicated basically onsite. So, there's a couple, uh, features that that parcel currently serves, um, that they'll take over responsibility for and, and address. DOT, we've been in discussions with them, Mr. Cummings, about specific appraisal requirements, all, all those sorts of things. So, there has been, uh, a robust discussion with DOT, and they've not indicated there's any issues with the taken this approach. As was noted, there were two locations specifically called out for future access points. On the parkway, this was one of them, the other one was a, a connection to Franklin Street. So, and those are the only two. So, um, so, yeah, we have had discussions, and those discussions are ongoing.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, if I may, just a quick follow-up.
Yep.
You may not have gotten this far yet, but who would be responsible for, I guess, actually writing the check for, for the payback? Is that incumbent upon the developer, the city?
Well, the purchase and sale agreement is Blaylock being the buyer, the city being the seller, of the four-point-four-two acres. So, whatever that ultimate purchase price is, and it's effectively gonna be determined by the appraisal that's been in process, and then the sort of vetting of that appraisal, that'll set the purchase price, and Blaylock will then pay that purchase price to the city. Between the city and DOT, they will determine the flow of funds out, I think most of which makes its way to a federal highway, as I understand it.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I ask one, one additional question?
Sure.
Thank you. Based on the preliminary layout that, that you have, I guess it would be page nine of, of the slide presentation, it looks like there's a connection into, uh, the intersection of Fairmont and Warsaw. I, I can't quite tell if that's intended to be gated, or, or what, but, but if that, that there is general access, i.e. non-gated, has there been any engagement with the neighborhood in that area?
The, that roadway is an emergency access to be gated. And that's a component of the con, master concept plan, for example.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's been, the people have reached out to the neighborhood, and Alderman Cleese may know better than I, but I, over time, that's occurred. But, um, the, in a way, the beauty of this project to me is, uh, access comes off the parkway. The project doesn't exist without the parkway, it's a practical matter.
No, I appreciate the clarification. It just wasn't entirely clear on the, um, on the plan if that was gated or, or public access. So, thank you for the clarification.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, to add on to that, Alderman Lopez, who is the Alderman of this location, has had thorough conversations with all of those neighbors, or many, I should, I never should say all, but many of the neighbors within that, and that was one of their concerns. So, you, you, um, made sure that that doesn't happen. Traffic does not flow into those neighborhoods, which was their biggest concern. But to have a fire access road and everything like that is also safety for those neighbors there, that if anything happened, it can be accessed from a variety of different ways. So, um, the, all of these neighbors are very, in, 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 in agreement with what's happening here, so, thank you, though.
Thank you.
So, just a procedural question. So, if these ordinances go through, there's no, and, and, uh, site plans are developed, I guess there would be subdivisions first, right? The steps of this would be ordinances are created, subdivisions are created. You said there was lots that were contemplated, and then, uh, site plans would be created. Are there any, is there any interplay with zoning if these ordinances go through? Or does it go only from altermanic to planning?
If I may, Matt, if I may turn to Tom Zajak from, he's a project engineer for Hainer Swanson. He, I think he has a little bit of insight on that.
Yeah, just wondering about the steps, and the, you know, how it comes through.
There are no variances contemplated, by the way, but let me let...
These ordinances essentially create, right? I just wouldn't want to get through this and then we're in a state of having variances.
Sure. Well, good evening. Tom Zajak, civil engineer with Hainer Swanson, sitting in the back row tonight, but hopefully, in a couple of months, I'll be before you, presenting what would be a subdivision. It'd probably be two subdivision applications, one for the main body of the site, which would be consolidation, and then re-subdivision with the public road. We also are carving off, we'll have a one into two subdivision of the Tamposi lot that was referenced, that two-thirds acre, which will come into the parcel. And then, of course, we will have the site plan application for the full redevelopment, where I'm assuming we'll spend the focus of our time. So, those would be the three applications that would come concurrently before the planning board. And, uh, at this time, we haven't identified any sort of a zoning relief that would be needed. We would be proceeding with a conservation commission related to some of the impacts, but would, would proceed directly to, to planning board after the Board of Aldermen process is, is completed.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I was just making sure that it would seem kind of, you know, counterproductive that we'd get through the ordinances and you'd end up having to go get a variance.
I would be the most disappointed person here, by far.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, along those lines, I think, uh, so there's a partial discontinuance, portions of the right-of-way, and then a subdivision. I don't know when that occurs in this process. Is that, is that the proper procedure for creating that right-of-way, quote-unquote, right-of-way lot?
Yeah, so the discontinuance would need to occur before that underlying land is, is merged, and then further subdivided as part of the two subdivisions that will occur concurrently with the site plan submission.
And then, the, um, the process of sort of the bridge, how does, is that part of the master development agreement? Or is that, um, how does that, how does that work?
It's part of the master concept plan first, depicted. And it's also part of the master development agreement as drafted, meaning it's a contemplated element of, of public improvements. And, so, and you've not seen the master development agreement draft, and you're the most fortunate folks to not have to have seen it yet. But you will someday. And, the master development agreement contemplates sort of timing and thresholds of development by which permitting for that, for example, and then construction of that is to occur. So, yes, the master development agreement does deal with it in, in fair detail.
Okay. And, but, like, who, um, is that, is that become a public thing?
Yes.
Okay. So, that would become a, a city bridge, for lack of...
As would be the kayak launch, the parcel to be conveyed to the city.
Okay.
What you'll see in the development agreement, because that will be referred here, I believe, will be timing...
will be timing associated with each of those improvements and when they're to be permitted, constructed, associated with the development and its progression.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chair, may I make just one comment?
Sure.
And this may have been covered while I was, stepped away, but the, the planning department did receive a, a very lightly amended iteration of O-2343 this afternoon. And I don't believe that that was, I don't believe that got distributed based on the timing. I wanted to quickly review that because I would request this evening in the event that you issue a favorable recommendation. I just want to quickly review, there are some very minor changes, if you wouldn't mind me just quickly reviewing those. And these are only to meets and bounds, based on some additional review conducted by the legal office. So if you'd like to pull open O-2343, I'll quickly review these changes.
Yeah, just, I gotta get to it. It's in, it's in what you sent around, right?
Correct.
It's in what we got tonight.
I think it's in what we have tonight as well.
Is it?
It is, it is in what you have this evening. Okay.
Sorry.
So I don't need to then review them, but there are changes on page two to add 56 west, just, so this is sort of above the midline. This is above along with a portion of the bed of the Nashua River. There's an addition of a west bearing. Does everyone have this?
We're, what item number?
I'm trying to find it, so maybe.
You're talking about O-43, right?
It's O-2343.
I, yeah, I think some of us have it and some of us don't.
Oh. I got the, it was in my mail packet. That's where I pulled it from.
Yeah, so it's in the mail, so it's in the, yeah.
Okay, hang on a second.
Well, I have-
It's the ordinance itself, I think, in the, the package that they gave us.
Yeah.
The ordinance is in here as well.
Yeah, I got it, I got it in front of me.
Right, but this is, Matt, I think what you're saying is this is the O-2343 that we would have gotten in the original packet, has been amended.
That is correct.
Right.
That is correct.
And that's what's in this packet that they gave us as well.
And, and rather than reviewing each line of this, what we'll do is we'll just quickly share the screen so that everyone can take a look at this.
Sure.
And again, apologies for not providing this earlier, but it was provided this afternoon and we want to make sure the board has access to these changes. Page two. Brad, all along, you're welcome to. The first change is on page two and it's above the midpoint and it simply changes a distance of 179.72 feet, point of beginning, to add a west bearing there, as you see right at the bottom of the screen. Again, these are just meets and bounds reviews-
Yeah.
-or changes. The next modification at the bottom of page two is simply to add northeast rather than northwest, as you see here.
All right.
And the last change on the end of page three of the ordinance is simply to strike 11 at the bottom of page three and replace it with 1, as you'll see right there, up just a bit, Sam, to the right-hand side.
Oh, it says lot 11 in ours, it's lot 1?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And Sam, you said that it occurs on page 1 as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Those are the amendments proposed. I just want to make sure the board has access to those and we would request that you recommend as amended, if you'd be comfortable.
All right. Okay. Anything else?
No, we just thank you for your time and again, we do respectfully request that the board provide favorable recommendations to the Board of Alderman. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Okay, so discussion on our end. Any comments? Seems like a pretty interesting development and a lot of work gone into things. I appreciate the, somewhat attention to the process for modification, understanding that, you know, 15 years from now, who knows what's going to happen, kind of thing. We routinely have to deal with that from older stuff, so.
Yeah.
It seems like this is more in alignment with, I'll call it, the normal process, which I think is desirable, in my two cents.
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
There was some, some additional language later on in O-44 that made the distinction between major versus minor modification. So again, that doesn't, that, that can't foretell everything that may possibly come up, but it, it at least appears there's an outline of a process there. So I, I have some level of comfort that it could be adjudicated, whether it's this board, whether it's the Board of Alderman, or, or in some cases, just an administrative decision by, by building. So I, I think, I think the basic framework is there.
Alderman Cleve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to reiterate something that was mentioned earlier that makes this overlay different from one we recently had that had gone on for decades. And, and the point I think that was made was that this is one developer, going to happen all at once, and it's not going to be something piecemeal, correct? So even though there's like apartments and condominiums, it's all happening once, one development, so we're not going to run into the same situation.
I want to be somewhat cautious about answering that question.
You always are.
Well, there are not clear phases to this project, as with any large-scale redevelopment. The project will be, will be built incrementally by the developer. Particularly on the ownership side, there's a, there's a level of conveying the condos as they're actually built. And so while this, all of these documents assume full build-out, it is not outside of the realm of possibility that fewer units could be built, which these ordinances contemplate, but we are proceeding as if the entire development would be built out. And as you'll see later in the master development agreement, to that end, many of the improvements that are critical to the site being successful are called for earlier in the development process to ensure that everything is being provided early in the event that market conditions change or something else changes and the full build-out does not occur. But we want the full build-out to occur without question, as I think the developer would like.
Alderman?
I, I hear what you, what you said, that we want full. I, I just want to make sure that we're not going to run into the same situation, I guess. Is there potential for that?
Without, without being specific about other ordinances or site plans that this board has been considered, I think by nature, this development is a unified one in the way that it's being presented. There are pieces that are dependent, pieces of it that are dependent upon others. I think in other cases and other overlays in the city, that's not necessarily been the case, and a multitude of different mixed uses have not relied on each other, so I do think this is inherently different.
Thank you.
Other comments, anybody? You want to pick up some motions? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a favorable recommendation and that motion would be on the referrals from the Board of Alderman on proposed ordinances, O-23-043, O-23-044, and O-23-045. And with respect to O-2, sorry, O-23-043, that would be with the amendments that Director Sullivan communicated this evening. And as to all three, I would like to make a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, so we have that motion for a favorable recommendation for these three ordinances, or proposed ordinances, from Mr. Barley, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, that motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Okay, so next up, we have another referral. This is Board of Alderman, proposed O-23-047, amending land use code regarding minor site plan amendments to permit outdoor dining. So do we have somebody to talk on that? Matt, is that you again?
That, that is me again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Matt Sullivan, speaking to the proposed ordinance to amend what is known as the minor site plan amendment section of the city's land use code. And to provide just a brief, you know, sentence or two of overview here, what this change does is codify a process that was implemented through the COVID-19 pandemic that created additional outdoor dining, both in parking lots and other areas on private site plans for seasonal outdoor dining when appropriate. Again, this sort of emerged when inside dining was particularly unsafe and individuals felt uncomfortable, and so city staff through an administrative process, recognizing the ADA codes need to be complied to, parking standards still need to be complied with, actually issued seasonal approvals to add outdoor tables and the like. And you've seen many of these around the city. What we're really trying to do here is simply provide that ability to restaurant uses and others that want outdoor dining moving forward, restaurant uses. And this simply creates a process for us to do that, where our prior authority had actually expired. This would allow us to continue doing this on a seasonal basis. One of the things that you'll see is that we waived the fee that's traditionally associated with an administrative review application, and the reason for that is simply that we're requiring annual certification, and so we did not feel it was appropriate to charge it, charge it year over year over year. In addition, you know, this is recognized to be a minor amendment and we did not feel that a fee was appropriate. Be happy to answer any questions about the nature of the amendment that's being requested, but believe this is a very positive step for businesses that want to have outdoor dining and we certainly believe an enhanced experience for diners in the city as well. And again, this is on private property only. This does not include any other outdoor dining scenario within the public right-of-way or any other public property on sidewalks, as an example.
Okay. Questions?
Alderman Cleve?
Thank you, and thank you for indulging so many questions, but my only question is that if they, they get the approval for the outdoor dining, I assume that they would have submitted a plan of sort. If that plan changes from year to year, do they have to resubmit a plan and then would there be an administrative fee for that?
That's a, that's a great question. The answer is yes. That's actually exactly why we've installed this sort of annual certification process. We've found that restaurants' needs do change over time. They learn from year to year. And so nearly every outdoor dining approval that we issued during the COVID pandemic particularly changed over time. That's one of the real reasons why we're doing this annually, rather than issuing one approval that could change. We don't want the city to then be in the position where it has to do code enforcement or something of the like. We want to have an open and honest conversation with the business upfront about what our expectations are. That's why we're doing this annual process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as, as a matter of record, I imagine a lot of restaurants rent their space as opposed to own, or you're requiring the actual owner file the application of, the owner of the property that is file the application, as opposed to just the establishment proper?
Great, great question, Mr. Ballinger. The answer is that the owner is required to consent via signature to the application. The business itself can actually be the applicant, but the property owner has to certify if they accept the proposed seating layout.
Okay. Mr. Chair, an additional question?
Sure.
If I may. There's a provision in here regarding temporary structures. Has there been any discussion as to what's temporary and, and what's not, and, and if it would be something that is, I don't know, any discussion in general about what may be considered too obtrusive, even if otherwise deemed temporary? I'm trying to avoid a situation where somebody basically expands outward, you know, and creates 1,000 additional square feet of, of building space effectively under the guise of, well, it's just temporary, we can take it down anytime, so.
Good question, just as a matter of-
That was a vague, vague question.
No, no, that's all right. And just as a matter of clarification, that item C that Mr. Ballinger is referring to is actually an existing section of the code. What it's traditionally been used for is when, as an example, someone rents, say, a modular storage unit for a move and it sits adjacent to a property line, whether that's for a commercial entity or the like, the plant, the administrative officer has the authority to approve that on a temporary basis to be in place. We've also had some other structures, restroom facilities, I can't think of other, you know, examples that we've run into that have a finite period of time that they need to be in place, and we have exercised this provision of the zoning to allow them to be there, recognizing and assigning a term that they can actually be in place. So yes, this has been used, it hasn't been used, to my knowledge, in a way that's detrimental to the property owner or any of butters, but it doesn't specifically relate to the outdoor dining amendment being considered this evening, but good question.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions?
Mr. Hudson?
The, this is reference to seasonal outdoor dining. What season are we talking about? Because I've seen, you know, igloo structures for winter dining and-
Yeah.
Does this contemplate all seasons or specific seasons?
That's a, that's a good question. This essentially, perhaps it's misleading, Engineer Hudson, the, the season really contemplated is an annual season. And so I think you make a good point that this could arguably be called annual termed outdoor dining expansion, but traditionally, we will assign it to the summer season. That said, I believe that this language is flexible enough that if a restaurant comes in to install the heated igloos on their property and they're building code compliant, they're properly anchored, I certainly think that we would issue a winter seasonal permit as well, but it will be tied either to sort of the, the core summer or core winter season, as it were. But I think that's a great question, that it's not simply summer.
And for, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
And just for the, just for the record, I mean, these are, the planning department has a role in granting these site approvals, but then there's also corresponding health department approvals and whatnot, right?
That, that's correct. That's a kind of a softball question that, that's good because it helps me recognize that there is in fact an interjurisdictional process. The Fire, Marshall, Health, and Building are all involved in this process. In fact, engineering has been involved in some circumstances, particularly when we've had barriers installed without, within parking spaces adjacent to a parking lot aisles where speeds may be higher. So it's very much a cooperative process. There are multiple signatures required on these applications to ensure that they're actually compliant with our standards, so it's not that the planning board is signing off without consultation with other jurisdictions. That's a great question.
Ms. Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just one more question. So if a business is able to leave a temporary structure up year-round, essentially, you know, what, what steps are taken to make sure that the temporary structure is still a safe place, I guess? What I, I'm just trying to picture, like, something being up for a while that's not, that's temporary.
So the, the core to the idea of a temporary structure is that it's there, there for a limited amount of time. And so walking through a hypothetical, if a, if a property owner approaches, the planning department requests that something be allowed for a period of two weeks due to construction activity or the like, we can certainly approve that administratively. The question is, you get past the two weeks, it's the third week, and the structure is still there. Technically, that gives the Community Development Division the authority to go and begin the code enforcement process. Likely it would be more of an ongoing conversation with whoever has requested the temporary structure, but core to temporary structures is that they're there for a finite period of time and that has to be agreed to between the city and the requister. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, okay. That's what I was unsure if there was actually a finite amount in time or-
Yes, and, and so this, the, the temporary structure code, again, not related to what's being considered this evening, but the temporary structure ordinance as it exists today, great question, it doesn't mean that someone can simply go and do as they wish. There needs to be a consultation with the city about what the temporary structure is because there's a process by which we actually approve that through the minor site plan amendment process that's administrative in nature.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? All right. Anybody want to make a motion on this one? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that the planning board makes a favorable recommendation to the Board of Alderman regarding ordinance O-23-047.
All right, so we have that motion for a favorable recommendation for O-23-047 from Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Discussion items, inclusionary zoning?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request, first ask, does everyone have access to the materials that were provided as part of your prior meeting packet on this item?
Good question.
If, if you do not-
I don't think so.
Okay.
I probably do have it.
We're just realizing that now.
Yeah.
This is not time-sensitive.
Right.
And I assume that might be the case, as we're sitting here. So this is, this can absolutely be delayed.
Okay.
It's not critical that we discuss this this evening, but what I will request is we will distribute this for you all to take a look at. What I will do is I will include just an overview memo of the core concepts that are included within that.
Yep.
My only request would be that because we're not considering it this evening, that when this is added to the agenda, hopefully on a lighter, a lighter night, that we can get into some of the details because I want to prepare you to be ready to- that we can get into some of the details because I want to prepare you to be ready to actually adopt these. And so, you are the power to adopt these standards. Just want to have a more meaningful conversation when you all are ready, and we've actually given you the material needed to review.
All right, that sounds good.
Happy to defer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have to have a motion on that.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Other discussion items, one thing we were remembering at the beginning of the meeting here with staff is, we don't have an NRPC representative anymore. I think it was Ed for a long time. So, I'm interested to see if anybody might be interested in taking on that role. Maybe you can describe what the, what it entails?
Sure, yeah, so the.
Not to interrupt, Mr. Durfee, Mr. Chair, I, I, I've known Jamin Carr for a while. If there's an opportunity to engage somehow, I, I'd be willing to volunteer myself. As said, I would certainly love to hear the job description.
Too late, too late, Bob.
You already said yes.
Motion second.
All right. You want to just briefly go over it?
Sure, so the City of Nashua is allotted four representatives on the executive commission of the Nashua Regional Planning Commission. They, they hold, I believe, monthly meetings. They're essentially, I won't quite say, a steering commission for, for the planning commission, but there to, you know, represent the individual communities and some of the high-level decision-making made at the RPC level. So, Bob, I'm sure they would be very happy to have you, and the board has not had representation for, I believe, three to four years.
Yeah, there's been some to Ed left, I think, so.
And they're doing some really good work. You know, they're a critical part of our transportation planning processes. They give us access to federal funds and help us through, through that process. But they also do a lot of really great environmental and housing work, and so, I'm not just pitching this. It's a really great, you know, place to get involved, and Bob, you'd be a good fit, no pressure, but.
So, I heard a volunteer. Do you want to make a motion on that? Let me get that written down. Anybody?
Do we need to nominate?
Nominate, I suppose.
I'll, I'll nominate Mr. Ballinger for the position on the NRPC.
All right, so we have that motion to nominate Bob Ballinger for our NRPC representation. We have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion other than Bob?
Thank you, Bob.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes. All right, and you'll keep him in the, on when things are happening? Okay, great. Any other discussion items from anybody? Okay, excellent. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Make a motion to adjourn, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes. It's eight thirty-three. Yeah, adjourn.